All right, guys, thank you so much. Today is Tuesday, May 7th. Wow, Tuesday, May 7th, time is flying. And today is a special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council to be called to order at 6:05 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moby Dune.
Present.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Present.
Denise Malanowski Maxwell is absent. Hassan Saab.
Here.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You read Robert's Rules of Order, they actually asked you to stay present.
Okay, we'll start saying it.
Just joking. All right, we'll let her go. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. We are going to have... Mr. Turner today is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Turner, thank you for that. All right, next up is the Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
The Honorable Council Chair, Pro Tem Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the special meeting of May 7, 2024, as submitted.
Motion made by the Honorable Councilman, Chair Pro Tem Ahmad and the Honorable Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that? Hearing, none. Please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, we have public hearings and comments on agenda items only.
Council Chair.
Agenda items only.
You need to make a motion.
Oh, no. We're on public comments and agenda items only. No motioning. I'm sorry. Public hearings and comments on agenda items only, I still have to go to open... I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So you need to do the motion, right?
Yeah. Council Chair. So you don't want me to go to public comments first?
The public hearing is the only thing on the agenda.
I know, I know, but it's still number five before I go to 5A.
You can go for it, go on to.
Okay. Well, I'm still going to open it up to public comments and agenda items only. All right, see none here in person, because there's... Nobody here? I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. Nobody here that wants to get up and speak? Anybody on Zoom? All right, I don't see anybody on Zoom now. Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council open the public hearing at 6:07 PM for the purpose of hearing comments and/or objections, if any, to that proposed corporate fund budget for the City of Dearborn Heights for the fiscal year of 2024, 2025, as outlined in 5-8.
Motion made by the Honorable Council Chair, Pro Tem Ahmad, and seconded by our Honorable Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? I have a discussion. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
There were some items we requested from Ms. Miranda that we still have not received.
Okay. Michelle here today?
I'm sorry, she's on Zoom.
Before we get there, I guess I'll ask, do you have any other questions?
I have... Yeah, first I want that question. I mean, the documents we requested were very crucial to the questions that we would have asked today for the hearing.
So my question is, in the past, I don't know what has changed, maybe Mayor, you can tell us a little bit about... Usually we sit here, I believe it was Cindy and then David Saputa and the former HR. We usually... Not HR, I'm sorry. Or it was maybe the former HR. We usually go through line item by line item during the public hearing comment. I mean, that's how we did it in the past. Are we not doing that this time? Turn on your mic on for me, please.
So the public hearing is for the public, they can ask questions, and we basically note in file for any questions at the residence, anybody on Zoom or here.
So are we going to go through all the changes and everything we requested, or is this it?
Whatever changes you guys ask for, I believe it's in the document that's in... Right, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
So are we not going to go through the entire thing one last time? No, it's actually whatever you guys recommended, whatever was brought forward, it's in there, so...
Well, there's still some stipulations in there that were not adjusted or changed.
Yeah, which ones?
Well, one, like the position of the deputy interim inside the Building Department. We cannot just agree to create this new position, because they would have to go through the civil service or whatnot. So we can't agree to that, but we can agree to giving them somewhat of a pay raise. So like just certain things that... And I really thought like we were going to go in the past, like we did last year and the year before, we went line item by line item, and they went through us in depth one last time. Hey, guys, we fixed everything, here's the budget, we went through everything together. Any other changes? No, I'll send you guys the updated version. So I mean, I would still like to do that.
I mean, you can go through item by item, Council Chairs, if you have anything, you know, we can address it. I mean, we already gone through it.
Council Chair. Hang on one second, Councilman, please. Mayor, respectfully, that's how I would like this to be done. I was expecting that to be done like in the past. I didn't expect us to just have, wait here, have no comments, and all those just go home.
No, I mean, anybody can make comments, Council Chair.
That's not what I'm saying. I understand that. But I didn't expect us to just give comments and everybody go home. That's not how we did it in the past.
Well, you can stay here as long as you want, so...
Yeah, I'm not trying to be combative with you, I'm not. I'm really not. Trying to be nice, I'm just saying what changed. No.
So whatever issues you have, Council Chair, bring it up, and you know, like I said, we'll go over it.
All I'm saying is, this is how we did in the past. Are we not doing it like we did in the past? That's all you got to answer, yes or no? In the past, we went through the budget line item by line item. I don't know if you remember this, ma'am, do you remember this HR director? I believe you were in the meeting when we went through it line item by line item when Cynthia did that. If you want, I can pull up the Zoom from last year's public hearing meeting. It's okay, because I sat through it and I watched it this morning.
Okay, I know Plant Moran is online, you know, we asked, and said usually public hearings for the public, actually, because they didn't really get a chance. You guys had a chance to go through item by item, and the public did not get a chance.
The public spoke after every single meeting.
That's what a public hearing is, Council Chair.
Mayor, at the last two, three years, public hearings, I'm just trying to get... Like, I'm not debating you. Not in debate, this is how it was done. At every public hearing meeting, we sit here, table, chief of staff was available, you were available, we went through it line item by line item. What is the difference this year?
If we could go through line item by line item, let's go through it right now.
Michelle's not here.
Where are the directors?
She's on Zoom.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
May I suggest, just listen from the public today, and we can schedule another special meeting for the going line item by line item?
Okay.
I agree. I think we need to vote on this, Council Chair, before we move on, on the motion that I just did, to open it for the public.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Coniston. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now we're in a public forum, I'm sorry, guys. Or now the public hearing is open to the public.
Drabkowski, Columbia Street. It's a shame that our directors aren't even here, so you can go line item by line item. So how can you have a quorum or a budget study session or a public comment without them even here? So we're not even getting our job done. Where's your directors, Mayor?
Refer everything over to the Council Chair.
Where's the directors, Mr. Chair?
Mayor, would you like to answer that?
Council Chair, I don't want to keep saying over and over again, you know, this is a public hearing. If they have a question, bring it up, we'll answer. Some of them are online, so whatever questions you guys have, bring it up.
I see two here and one online.
Okay, well, what questions do you have?
There could be anything throughout the meeting that may come up.
Bring it up, bring it up.
All right, guys, put in order, come on. Mayor, please, go forward.
How about not...
Vince, to the chair, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
How about not creating double departments? You know, we have a communication department, we don't need two of them.
Your director to answer his question?
So...
Would you like to refer that to which director?
It's the mayor. It's his creation.
Mayor, would you like to answer that?
Council Chair, again, you know, the budget was proposed to you guys, if you guys don't want that, just, you know, make the recommendations and we'll change it.
Council Chair.
Hang on one second, it's still his time.
I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Saab.
I'd like to make a couple of recommendations to the budget. One, as an in-house grant writer. Secondly, I would like to see the budget actually balanced, not unbalanced. The city has to have a balanced budget, not 2.7, 2 point... You know, we don't have the exact numbers to 2.9 million dollars in the deficit. The budget has to be balanced in order for any council here with the duty and oath everybody took is that, you know, to know where taxpayers' money and what the city has and what we're up and we're down. This balance should... This budget should be balanced. Until right now, it's still not balanced. And again, we requested information to be mailed to us, I think by Thursday by 4 o'clock. And I went through the emails I got, and I seen maybe one item on there that was changed.
Are you saying, Councilman, they weren't changed?
No.
Is Michelle here to answer that question? Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir. We went through the budget last week, double-checked to make sure all of the requests...
We went through the budget last week, made sure all the requests that three of us had written down. We reconciled all of each of our different notes, and all of the changes that were identified are listed in the budget.
Can you read them to me?
Council Chair, I'm sorry. Can we get an itemized list of those items you reconciled?
On your...
The numbers, because we asked for specific numbers on certain positions, certain bonuses, and certain stuff, and you rolled them into the budget. That's not what I was looking for.
So you'll notice, Councilman Saab, that in our budget this time, when we sent that out to you, there is a column for what the mayor's and the administration budget request, and then there is a separate column for council. And all of the changes that were made, so if you'd like, I could go through them and I could walk you through what we made.
Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, we asked, well, I'm not disputing what we suggested or recommendations we made. What we're asking for is the items that we requested from you that said you needed approval to send to us, that I've still never received an email from you. It's a public hearing. I would like... Excuse me, sir. I would like your answer to that. Since this is our public meeting to hold this, the items that we requested from you, Plant Moran, and you verbatim, your words, you needed approval from the mayor's office.
Because the information on the...
We had said, we didn't want no information, no names, no health record, nothing.
You want names, you can have names.
Whatever it is, but I did not want any of this... The things that you're claiming that's holding this up for approval has been going on for over a month.
Longer than a month.
Or I'm being generous, saying a month. And that information still has not been provided to us. You're going to tell us that, yes, I see the items that you put, that you changed, that we recommended.
Okay.
But the items we requested, we've never received any of that information. To make an accurate assumption or to what the budget is and the numbers on the budget, we asked for those. And why have we not gotten them?
Well, the biggest request that I remember hearing with respect to, and I'm going to just tell it what it is, payroll. We added the 22, 23 payroll numbers to the sheet.
That's not what we requested.
Well, you're talking about Council Chair's email?
No.
Because Council Chair, you and I stood right over here, and we talked about...
You said only one person got a bonus.
That is accurate.
And that one person's bonus didn't reflect this new updated one that you sent me. Look at it.
What you...
Hang on one second, Councilman. It still shows only the salary, the bonus is not included in there.
You are correct, Council Chair, I can add that.
I know where I stood.
But that was the only one.
And it was the only thing that I looked at, and when you gave that to me, I said the rest of it is also flawed.
That is accurate.
And I didn't share this information with anybody here on council. Actually, this is the first time that I've actually even said this, because I've never said it to Councilman Ahmad, to Councilman Saab, to Councilman Wenzel, to the clerk, to Councilman Coniston, to Councilwoman Breyer, to Councilwoman Denise Maxwell, with respect to all of them. I have kept this to myself, because I knew that you were going to ask us to approve this budget, but when we request for an information, the information that you gave me specifically, Mr. Turner, doesn't reflect that. So really, what it's telling me is, you don't care what we're asking for.
I disagree with that statement. I just do.
Make me believe that, otherwise then.
Well, I mean, I told you the information prior to this even happening.
But it's not in writing.
And I do apologize that it did not end up here. So I can definitely make that adjustment. There are no other changes that need to be made.
We don't know that, because me looking at just that told me you guys didn't listen.
Unfortunately, I can't give you the detail, Council Chair, and we've talked about that before, and I will stand by the statement that I cannot give you that information.
Why?
Because there is sensitive information included in those documents that I have. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Included in the document that I have that I cannot share. So if you want me to go back and try to rewrite a report with the payroll company, I will certainly do that, but I cannot share the information. I mentioned it to you twice before, and I humbly submit to you, I cannot do it.
Okay, Mr. Turner, I'm going to ask you a question. No names, no nothing. Were there any bonuses given out last year?
One.
Okay, does it reflect on this budget?
We already went through this, Council Chair.
Yes or no, does it reflect on this current budget?
Absolutely not. We already went through this, Council Chair. Is there any other questions? Are there any other questions you would like to ask me about the budget?
Yes.
I would be happy to answer.
Yeah, Council Chair.
But we both know, there's only one budget bonus that was not included. I already admitted to that. There's no reason for us to recant that over and over and over again, Council Chair, respectfully. I do respectfully submit to you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Council Chair. Mr. Turner, I have a few more questions for you.
Yes, sir.
I say otherwise that there was more bonuses given than one, and I can prove that, number one.
Please do. Provide documentation.
But I walk, Mr. Turner, please, let me finish my question.
My computer's right there, I will be happy to go through it. And again, I apologize. I do apologize.
Mr. Turner, let me finish.
Okay.
I'm honest, I'm not arguing. I'm just trying to get facts for this budget to move the city forward. And we're asking for information that we're not getting. I don't know if somebody's holding you, telling you, no, you can't provide this information, but we made a request to you. I personally walked into your office, and I had this conversation with you, and you said we're going to get it done. We're going to make it... Mr. Turner, please. And I could tell you, I have documents, I have a document, and it's a public document, that more than one person in the city got a raise.
Not a raise, we're talking bonuses, correct?
Sorry, a bonus.
Okay. So Councilman Saab, you did come to my office. I told you I would get it done. I told you I would reach out to the payroll company, and I would get the report for you that you requested. When I got the report, there's information on the report I cannot share.
Okay.
I told you that, I told Council Chair that, more than once.
But what did you tell me you were doing with that, with that document? Didn't you say retracting everything and giving it to us?
No, what I'm trying to do is get approval to change the report so that the information that I cannot share isn't on it.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, there's a lot. Because when we talk about departments, each department...
So why don't you take the numbers from that department and just put it on a spreadsheet?
Well, here's what I can do, just to satisfy you, I can get the last page of the report. It summarizes the entire report.
No, I want it.
And it will tell you, and it will tell you what the bonuses were, and it will validate the number I gave you. I already gave you a number. It will support the number I gave you. And it will have Palacities information at the top, and it's a PDF, so I could not manipulate it. And it's going to show you the summary of what I told you. Because I'm not going to lie to you, I have no reason to lie.
I'm sorry, I'm not in any way saying that you are a liar.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I did not say that at all.
Because I'm not a liar, I only speak the truth.
I never said that.
Numbers don't lie, sir.
I'm asking you the questions that I said I asked.
Guys, I don't want to make this a back and forth debate.
Agreed.
Council Chair, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Council.
The budget is not accurate. We have a duty to approve a budget that's balanced with every information requested that we request to see this budget, to look at the numbers, and we don't have that. Honestly, I'll publicly say it right now, I'm not supporting this budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Turner, can you go through the list items of everything that you guys have made changes, except for the one that I caught? Because we've already explained that you guys didn't update that.
Yes. So from the 4:30 meeting, we added $42,000 to capital outlay for the court for computers. CDBG, we increased the project coordinator to $40 an hour, and then we took it out because we never finalized that one. There was some question about previous raises, so we left that one out.
Hang on one second.
And this is also in your budget detail, if you'd like to see what the original was and then what we moved it to?
Hang on one second.
That's on your budget... Yes, sir.
One second, please. Ms. Hazlitt, I'm going to read you 418 of 2023. Video marked at 2 hours 18 minutes and 19 seconds. Most headband should make $40 an hour, but it wasn't agreed to by the directors nor affirmed by the chair as a final decision. And then followed by that, there was... I'm sorry. So the discussion that had happened there, Mrs. Hazlitt, that we went back and forth on was on 418, 2023. You can start at about the 2 hours and 15 minute mark. You'll hear the conversation, where majority was, I think, of this entire council unanimously said they were in support of that, and it was added to the budget. Maybe it wasn't agreed and voted on, but I think, going back to it, seeing that everybody said yes, that's what they wanted, you would assume they would be added to the budget, and it doesn't seem like it was ever added to the budget, because a vote was never made. But ultimately, like how we've requested, Mr. Turner, to make certain adjustments and changes when we had discussion, adjusting back and forth, it was never really voted on. So does that mean, because we didn't make any votes, we shouldn't be adding or taking or doing anything with the budget and just concurring with the mayor's budget? So my discussion to you is, can you go back, look at the...
Did you say April 18th?
April 18th, correct. And if these people were agreed to be added to the budget at these pay raises, let's go back and give them their retro pay, because they deserved it, and they were honored it, really. Please.
Oh my goodness. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Margaret Hazlitt, I'm HR Director, speaking as an employee. So I think one of the things that happens through this budgeting hearing process, and I did not attend all of them last year, is that ideas get discussed, suggestions are made, but in the end, whatever is in the budget that the council approves, then that's what we move forward with. And then sometimes we come back, many times we come back, to request an amendment to the budget. So if you're talking about last April of '23, during the budget hearing process, you have the exact time for that meeting. There was some discussion regarding increases for certain positions, is that...
Yeah, CDBG, and then I think we...
Oh, for CED, okay, okay.
And then we gave a... I think Councilman Wenzel put a resolution to honor their thing, so like now it's in writing, it's concrete. I don't remember what day that was.
Okay, so do you think that happened after the budget was passed for this fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay, so after the budget was passed for this fiscal year, then there was a budget amendment to make an adjustment to pay for positions? Is that...
No, not pay for positions, just give them their increase. They're making 35, or they're making 30, we went up to 40. And mind you, this is coming from... This is being paid by HUD. So this isn't our payroll, even though it's our payroll, it's not our payroll. Like, this is coming from...
In terms of, right, to say that the dollars that would support those increases aren't coming from our operational budget?
Correct.
Okay. And so these were positions in CED, and this happened after July 1 of 2023?
Correct.
Okay, so there was an adjustment? There was a request for an adjustment?
Several times we've made the request.
Okay, and it wasn't implemented?
Council Chair.
I believe we... Did you put a resolution? Yeah, Councilman Wenzel put a resolution. I don't know why we didn't move forward with it. Yes, Mayor?
Well, we discussed this at the last meeting, Council Chair, and again, it's pay equity, so you have, you're paying somebody part-time with, you know, again, I don't want to get specific on particular employees, and you have directors with bachelor's, master's degrees, and one maybe PhD, doesn't even make $40 an hour. So it's, again, we got to go back to pay equity, Council Chair. You can't give somebody $40 an hour, and the person next to that person is making only $18, $19,000 an hour, doing more work. Again, we... Council Chair, we can't do that. Again, like I said before, you're putting the city in a liability, you know?
Mayor, we had a discussion the other day, as the executive branch, the legislative branch. There's a check and balance here.
Exactly.
If we're coming here and we're putting a unanimously put resolution, we will... Those $17 and $18 an hour, which should be higher, should be reaching out to us. But you shouldn't be the one dictating and saying, no, you can't do that. We put a resolution, you can't tell us, no, we can and can't do that.
Well, you can write any resolution.
We did, we wrote a resolution.
However, again, you know, I have to look at the pay equity for every employee in the city. And when you give somebody almost $10,000 to $15,000 an hour to some directors, that's not fair for the director working six, seven days a week and one person working part-time. You know, I looked at the raises or the salary that you mentioned. You know, I do have it, I can go bring it. This person's making close to $40,000 a year on a part-time basis. And you have, you know, directors making, what, $20,000, $25,000 more a year, working here full-time?
No, directors are making 75 plus.
And you have a deputy directors...
Plus benefits, plus health insurance, plus longevity. There's a lot of things, Mayor, you can't compare the part-time to our full-time.
You have few hundred employees in the city, part-time employees, making way less than even $30,000 an hour, Council Chair.
Mayor, there's different things pays for different jobs. You've said that to me many times in these meetings. This is a different pay for a different job. And then the best part about it is, kind of like our HR director said, this is not coming from your day-to-day operation, this is not coming from this payroll. This is coming from HUD. HUD is paying them. Why are you telling HUD, who doesn't pay you, we're telling you get to keep that extra money?
HUD doesn't even know that what we're paying these employees. I don't think they know that. Not while we're actually checking to make sure that what is being done is legal.
Why are we checking four years later?
I'm just telling you right now, for pay equity first, but if you want, the first time when they mentioned HUD is paying for it, we need to verify to see if HUD is actually paying for all of it, or some of it's not coming from the city fund.
Mayor, you told me that a week ago. Have you gotten an update yet? Have you reached out to anybody? Is there any paper trail between you and HUD?
No, not yet.
You haven't done anything yet.
Well, we're busy doing a lot of other things at this point.
Come on, man, why can't we have a regular conversation?
I'll make that as a point to get hold of HUD the next few days.
You know, I mean, so like, let me just, I want to understand this. The council puts a resolution, says pay these people X amount of dollars. Resolution is ratified or approved on and voted on. The mayor comes back, doesn't veto it, and just comes back and says, no, I'm not going to do that? You're not allowed to make that decision? So you want me to walk up every time you make a decision to say, no, no, we're not going to make this decision?
Council Chair.
Not fair. You can't...
I'm being fair with all employees, Council Chair, not with select...
But we're not having that discussion right now.
Council Chair, I need to be fair with all the employees, not with select two people, okay?
Mayor, I am not, I am not... You know why we're doing this? They are non-union. We don't negotiate, remember? We don't negotiate, council doesn't negotiate. Council never got up here one time and said, we're demanding unanimously that everybody go give the police officers X amount of dollars. You guys made that decision. These part-time employees that are HUD, that is paid through HUD, not paid through our money, paid through HUD, I can verify it for you. And you know, and I will take that upon myself. I will take that role to figure out the exact information to show that HUD pays it, and I'm going to bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, can I ask you a question, Counsel Chair?
Please, as soon as I'm done, I'm going to let you.
Okay, go ahead.
As soon as I'm done, I'm going to let you. Right now, this council at a budget meeting and outside of a budget meeting passed a resolution. Counsel Chair sat here. We passed a resolution to give them their money. We've asked 10 times. Regardless of what you like or you don't like, you don't have the authority to come up here and say, well, I'm not going to honor your guys' resolution. I don't care what you seven people say. This is not, you can't be a tyrant dictator and say, I'm going to do whatever I want. It doesn't work that way. Please, sir, nothing. I have a conversation with the mayor, and I'm, and I'm, yeah, yeah. Okay, you're ready to, yeah, please. Thank you.
His mic's off.
So, please, all I'm asking you is, respect this body. You have to respect this legislative body. And if you don't want to respect us, that's fine. When a resolution is passed, it must be followed.
You're done?
Yes.
Okay, again, what happens if you have 100 employees now applying for the position that wants to make...
We'll deal with that when it comes.
No, I deal with it.
No, you don't have to.
No, no, the council doesn't deal with it.
Blame the council like you do all the time.
Okay, so I'm telling you, I'm being approached by several employees that were part-time, that they're saying, hey, they want to go over there and make the $40 an hour, that they're making $14,000, $15,000 an hour, and they're doing more hours.
Are they union?
They're the same status, hard time.
Bring them in. Can HUD pay them as well?
Again, it's pay equity, Counsel Chair.
You keep going back to the pay equity.
It's pay equity.
If HUD can pay them as well, bring them in.
Labor law to see if what you're doing is fair. I'm the one who has to deal with if there's any litigation against the city.
We have to deal with it. This is a city, you don't own the city. We all are part of the city. This is, this is we, us, us together.
Well...
We, not you, we, all of us. And what?
I didn't know this was a motion, you know, this is like a freaking show over here. It is a show.
Point of order, come on, Counsel Chair. Point of order. All I'm saying is, Mrs. Hazlitt, there's a resolution on the table that these individuals that are paid through HUD, that are not paid through our levy taxes. I mean, technically, they are because it's federal, but they're not going, taken away from our budget. They're paid through HUD. Now, whatever the reason is with the mayor and whatever's going on with them, I got nothing to do with it. All I can tell you is, this body put a resolution, this body requested in the last budget to honor these people's pay. That is it. I don't know these people personally. I don't, but I know that they came here, they requested it. I think it was Council Chairman David Abdullah that asked the question. And unanimously, we all voted on it. But all I'm asking you is, please, ma'am, look into it for us.
So, ma'am, I also think what could be helpful is that we broaden our conversation a bit here. So, I wanted to prepare a presentation for you around compensation and how compensation works. How do we determine the pay for certain positions? I hadn't included part-time positions in that presentation, but if you would allow me, if you schedule another budget hearing or whatever you decide to do at the end of the meeting, if you would provide time for me to do that presentation, then I think we can get into a good conversation. But what are the parameters that we're talking about? And then how do we move forward in terms of the things that you're doing? Because with all due respect, Counsel Chair, I'm between a rock and a hard place. I report directly to the mayor. The mayor directs me to take care of these things. You say that a motion was passed sometime after July, I believe you. You can give me the date, we can go look it up, all of that kind of stuff. When it comes to administrative things about, in terms of the executive branch, and where does that impact pay? I think that's part of the issue that we're having in terms of the struggle about what you would like to see happen and what the mayor perceives as the administrative role and the authority to implement or not implement that. So, let's start with a conversation about how compensation works in the city of Dearborn Heights. Let me include something with respect to part-time people because, you know, we're tossing around some terms here that I'm not sure that we have a good understanding of what we're really talking about or what the issues are or why they're issues. So, it comes back to how do we do the separation of powers between the legislative branch and the administrative branch? And then where does that come into play when it comes to pay and things of that nature? So, if you would be willing to do that, I could prepare something like that for us.
Thank you, Director, and I have a question too. I mean, I have, those are the numbers for the personnel that we approved last year, fiscal year 2023, 2024. And I see here, I don't know, I don't recall any resolution that would give the mayor or the administration the authority to increase police leadership, their salary by 25%. And I did ask Michelle last meeting, I was like, take it back to whatever was approved by council. So, I don't know if you can tell me who would give the power to the mayor or administration to give a 25% increase in salary with no authority from the council?
So, that authority comes from the mayor?
Who gives them that authority? Per charter?
I believe per charter.
Per charter, anything increase in salary has to come from council. I don't recall anybody passing a resolution that we can give them 25% increase.
Counsel Chair.
Mayor.
Okay, again, those are new positions. So, when we looked at to see what a deputy, a deputy chief, and at the time, how much they were making, you know, those, the positions that we have, I don't have the numbers in front of me. They're making less than what a deputy chief...
119, 119, 125, 127.
Well, plus you have uniform, plus you have a bunch of other stuff is included that the directors are not entitled to. So, there's a lot of other benefits. You have the drop program. You have four chiefs in three years, each one walked out with a hefty bonus.
That's irrelevant, we're talking about pay, we're talking about money.
I'm just letting you know, this is what we...
But we're not talking about that. The question is asked to you, who gave you the permission to do that, make that decision?
Again, you know, I looked at, I looked at what...
That's not the answer, Counsel Chair.
Well, it is the answer because those positions were not new.
Who gave you the authority to increase their salary without coming back to us? That's my question is...
Increase the salary, it was a new position.
It's the same thing, like you decided to act on behalf, by yourself, to not to give them the salary, the increases to the CDBG employees.
There were new positions, Councilman.
I was, well, it's not, it wasn't in the fiscal year. We approved something, and you gave them something else later on. That's not why we approved.
Again, it's a new position, the directors.
It's not, it was a new position.
What's a new position?
The two directors.
No, director and the chief, it was a new position.
The chief is not a new position. The chief's been around...
I'm talking about the two directors.
Position's been around since the...
I'm talking about the two directors.
I'm talking about the chief. The chief went from $90,000, $98,000 to 127.
102...
There's nothing to hide by the way. This is public, this is public...
Again, we looked at the compensation, I looked at the compensation.
You should have brought it to us.
Of the chief, no, it's still making a lot less than what the previous chief was...
Does that, does not matter.
It is, it is. We can give you the data. Counsel Chair, point of order, it's too much distraction and...
Please, guys, please, nothing from the audience. Vince, please.
He said he hasn't said anything.
Well, I'm here now.
Okay, please, nothing from the audience. Guys, come on, come on, come on. Point of order.
Counsel Chair, I'm done talking.
Point of order.
I guess, I already said what I have to say.
Okay. I just want you to know, Mayor, you don't have to speak no more, if you don't want to. It is illegal, and I'm going to use the word illegal, to spend taxpayers' money without the approval of the legislative body. It is illegal. Take me to whatever you want on this. You cannot take people's taxpayers' money, spend it without the approval of the legislative body. The governor cannot walk around and say, I'm just going to pay anybody whatever I want and not get the approval. Please, sir, nothing, that's all. It's illegal, illegal. I know Roger may disagree with me, but it is illegal.
I do disagree, so...
I know, I know you would disagree.
I'm not sure exactly what you're arguing, whether the directors' salaries...
Please, sir, please, sir.
So, that's why I...
Thank you so much. We're not talking about their salary. I specifically said the police chief position. The police chief, because I don't, I don't want to be told right now, there's an injunction going on, it's 4-point B. I do not want to make, I want to make sure that I'm requesting, and I mean, I'm sorry, I'm respecting the court's order. I am respecting the court's order for the record. In case anybody says I don't, here I'm saying it. I am respecting the court order. I am saying the chief's position, the chief's position, not the actual chief. I just want to say that three times. Was approved for $98,000.
102.5.
102.5.
Less compensation, Counsel Chair.
103, no, it was not.
No, there's compensation as well that the chief is not getting.
I have it right here, Mr. Mayor, that's what we approved.
Counsel Chair.
It's right here, Mayor, it's right here.
I'm talking about the other compensation that they're entitled, the other, the chief that was here before.
I'm not talking, we're not talking about that.
Well, I'm looking, and, okay, again, you asked a question, I'm answering.
I'm not, I'm not.
He's making less...
You're talking about the drop program. We're not talking, he was never a part of the drop program.
No, it's part of the compensation. We looked at the compensation, Counsel Chair.
Mayor, where does it say the police chief position without the approval of a council? They go from 102 to 127.
Okay, look, we have to go back and look at the compensation.
There's nothing.
Why don't you put it in writing, Counsel Chair?
Please, sir.
Then we can address it.
Please, sir.
Best way to handle it.
Thank you. I just want you to know, there's nothing that says the mayor can get bonuses. There's nothing that says the mayor can just walk up one day and tell, pay lots of money, give, pay this payroll, and nobody knows what that money is for.
Well, Counsel Chair, I will give you the previous compensation and the current compensation.
That's not what we're talking about. I'm going to give you the previous budget, which was approved.
You got to compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges.
Look, if any council member here thinks it was okay to give a raise without your guys' position and without your guys' vote, then you shouldn't be on council. Because I'm going to tell you, you are in charge of this budget. Your main role on council is to make sure where every single dollar is smart, it is accounted for. That is what every single one of us here promised to run on. Everybody said they were going to be fiscally responsible. Everybody said they're going to hold a balanced budget. Everybody said that they're going to fight for police and fire. And we want you to fight for police and fire. But you have to follow proper policy and procedure. End of story. Nobody is above the law, nobody. And you cannot just free will, just come out and say, I'm going to pay whoever I want. And I'm not going to pay whoever the resolution says.
Well, Counsel Chair, again, like I said, nobody's above the law.
Nobody.
Yeah, no kidding. However, like I said, the current chief is making a lot less than the previous chief with the compensation. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
So, we're fiscally responsible with that.
You're not fiscally responsible, you're spending money illegally.
You need to look at the previous compensation, what we...
I don't need to.
Well, you have to see what you're fiscally responsible for.
You should have brought the raise to us.
It's, again, it's, he's not getting the...
He's not getting the most, but he's still got some type of raise. I get it, you're right.
Well, he's, that position's not getting the most, but any other employee, he's got to be fair across the board. They can choose.
Any other questions, Councilman Ahmad?
I asked Michelle last time to take it back to whatever was approved by council, and still it wasn't changed, or that's another change, it wasn't changed. This is not going to happen. It's whatever this body approved is going to go on, it's not anybody else. So, whatever was approved by the fiscal year of last year has to go back in here, and then we'll decide if we're going to give a raise or not.
Yeah, but the money was already paid to these individuals.
Well, that's illegal, like you said, Counsel Chair, and somebody has to look into this. We can't just, somebody can't just decide to do whatever they want.
So, Counsel Chair?
Mayor.
Do you want, okay, so if you want the chief to be back to that, so that means he's entitled to everything that the previous chief had, is that what you're saying?
You should have put that in the, you should have brought that contract before us because we never even seen his contract. We've never seen any contract that you've just brought in. You just came in and, I had no idea. Like I told you in the floor, I found out on the American news in TCD. So, bring us the contract. I don't think, I've ever seen a contract here. And the rumor is, there's about like three, four different contracts that are just keep getting approved by you. Because I hear there's two contracts, so bring them both, the old and the new. Mr. Turner, anything else you have for us? The list, I know you were going to a list.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. The next one on the list is DPW, reduce overtime to 200K.
How much did we remove off of that?
Was it 25,000?
28,174.
I believe it was 28,000, but if you would, if you would like, I can go through and find it.
That's okay.
Okay.
Sir, please, guys, nothing.
These next couple are, these next couple are DPW, reduce traffic lights to 35K.
What was that?
Reduce traffic lights to 35K.
Okay.
Tree removal increase to 200K. The next one was the increase the, the winter maintenance to 150.
What was it before?
And that was on local streets, by the way. Thank you.
Council Pro Town?
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you tell us what winter maintenance is?
Winter maintenance, like streets, salting, just plowing, that kind of... We actually increased winter maintenance.
Oh, you said decrease.
Nope, I said decrease for tree removal.
No, tree removal, increase for tree removal.
I apologize, to traffic lights. Traffic lights was 35K, was reduced to 35K.
Traffic light.
Yep.
What is traffic law?
You know, when you're driving down the street, the thing that lights over the top? Traffic light maintenance? It's maintenance, traffic light maintenance.
We had only spent like $4,000 last year, and it was at 50 grand.
And doing what, installing them, maintaining them, putting new ones in, what?
Yeah, I mean, most of them would come to the county or the state. We're talking like the third residential area. Again, we only spent like $4,000.
Doing what?
I don't know, maintaining them, I don't know.
So, that's his question, that's what, that was his question.
Maintenance, maintenance.
Yeah, it's maintenance.
DPW director's not here, unless he's online.
Yes. So, winter maintenance went from 107 to 150. And that's on page...
Plus 43.
41 of the binder. And my apologies, Councilman Wensel, I was not trying to be smart. And my apologies, councilman Wenzel, um, I was not trying to be smart. It was the only answer I could come up with. And I do apologize if that was insensitive. Can I continue?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, water admin, reduce professional and contract to, contract services to 200. Uh, plea, and then you had requested that we remove all grant revenue and expenditures for, no, it's not. It's gone. Shall I, shall I continue?
Please.
Okay. Building and engineering, we increased the lease payment for the vehicles so that they accounted for the new ones that they were looking for. Uh, training budget was increased to 15K. Office manager salary was changed.
But the position title has not been changed.
Correct.
Can you please update that?
Uh, ordinance, remove 83K from the capex line. Add three salary positions. Remove overtime and part-time. IT, remove R and M, uh, reduce...
We didn't have to remove overtime. We reduced overtime.
Uh, we removed overtime.
Oh, we removed it because we would have more...
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And eliminate the part-time position because we're hiring potentially three new people.
Yes, sir.
The resolution passed.
Yes, sir.
Chair?
Yeah.
I think we just hired a part-time, a couple of weeks ago.
Well, maybe that person can turn it to overtime, I mean, full-time. And that's through TIFA.
Yeah, it's TIFA.
Thank you. Continue, sir.
IT, move R and M to 35K. Um, there was a question about the police, how many crossing guards they had. Um, I believe the answer was given during that day, but it was 15. And that the, and that the goal was 20. Um, for police, inca- increase supplies to 65K. For police, remove the telepho, or I'm sorry, um, yeah, remove telephone, 15K.
Well, that's because it was shared with the courts, correct?
Yes, sir. R and M, we reduced it 30K. We went to 290. Police, uh, we removed 40K from utilities. Emergency manager, 80K, Pete for part-time.
Removed?
Yes, sir.
Council chair, sorry. What about the emergency manager position? That was still not approved to council, no?
No.
So I would, I would like to actually remove that whole position if possible.
Counselman, I'm gonna have to...
Because it was part-time, keep it part-time.
Mayor said he's gonna bring it to us, or we could put a resolution to bring it forward. Mayor, can you bring that up at the next meeting? Thank you. I'll let you walk it on. Please allow him to walk that one on. I know we've asked like four times. George, I'm sorry. You know, Mayor, don't bring it on.
Uh, emergency manager, increase supplies to 10K.
Yep.
Um, and that's, that's pretty much all I had. There were a couple of things that were discussed and not finalized.
Very good. What's the, what's the thing that were discussed but not finalized?
Well, one of them was the, the CB, yeah.
What's the other one?
Um, Margaret had requested, and for, yes. And forgive me, labor relations, uh, position that was discussed. Um, and we didn't hear a resolution, so we didn't include it.
I think we all agreed to not do it. Labor negotiation.
Okay. Are there any other questions, council chair?
Please make sure that reflects the budget.
It's not, it's currently not in the budget.
I know you gave us a beautiful Welsh spiel on there, and, and Ms. Hell, you did a great job. I know you're coming towards your tenure here in Dearborn Heights, or at least feels like that. Um, but, but really, thank you. Uh, but I think this is, you know, we're a very small community, and I know we have a lot of, you know, contracts that are gonna be coming up in one year. However, um, I don't think we, as the budget, can afford it right now. It just, we're already over. And I'm sorry, Mr. Turner. Were you able to give us a, a final figure of where, if we removed, cut, up, down, left, right, anything?
With respect to the requests that were put, that were submitted, or that was...
Yeah, because we removed some things, we added some things, you know. You had the, the figure number or no?
Yes. Uh, so prior to the changes, we were at, um, a deficit of 2,937,037. After all of the changes... Yes, sir. It's actually on page 33 of your binder as well.
It was 2.9?
It was 2,937,037.
Okay.
And with all of the council changes, it increased to 3,15,713. There's about a $78,000, uh, additional appropriations.
Please, I, I need us, yeah, but George? I need you to get those things for me, please.
I'm sorry.
Well, no, I'm talking about the last meetings, please, guys.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Yeah. And I, you guys can take your time on that. I just, I wanna get it for...
So you can check me.
So I can check. Yeah.
I accept, I am a trust but verify, so I, I respectfully, uh, agree with your statement.
And I have some notes too that I can share over here. Uh, I mean, it's a public hearing now, so I'm gonna take it to the residents on Zoom first, and then we can go to the public, uh, here. Okay, go ahead, councilman. We can start off by Mrs. LaPointe.
I have one more I wanna add as well.
Let's, well, let me go to the public hearing first, because I know we're open for public comments, and then I'm gonna take it back to administration of elected officials. So, if you go ahead and unmute Mrs. LaPointe, said Chris LaPointe earlier, but...
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Testing out my son's new Christmas gift, his new microphone. It's very cool. Um, okay. Hi, guys. Rachel LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. First of all, you have just spent the last hour, except for the minutes where, uh, Mr. Drapkowski spoke, insulting every member of the public. This is the public here, not the let's sit and listen to city council and the administration argue some more here. So I'm deeply disappointed that you all do not have the restraint and the maturity to hold your comments until after you've listened to the people who elected you. I cannot even...
Thank you, Mrs. LaPointe.
So that's the first thing. Okay? Secondly, while I appreciate that you guys are finally having public dialogue about all this, it's not appropriate for you guys to be so argumentative about these things when you're supposed to be listening to us. You're supposed to...
Mrs. LaPointe, are you gonna speak regarding the budget or are you gonna...
Yes, I am. But you...
Please, let's speak on the budget.
Yeah, but this is part of it, okay? The charter is extremely clear, right? That the budget is determined by council, that council has control of the budget. Mr. Bazey knows this because he served on council for several years. He chose to leave that seat, right, to go and be the administrator. And that's a perfectly fine decision, but he willingly chose to give up his portion of that control of the budget. That's all that needs to be said about it at this point, and we don't need to spend hours arguing about it. You're wasting everyone's time. Regarding the budget, my comments were this. It was really more questions. What I wanted to know from council is that if you feel that section 8.2 of the charter was fulfilled or not. So to briefly summarize it, do you all feel that you received enough detailed, detailed is the word in the charter, detailed statements and estimates of all the anticipated income and the planned, proposed expenditures for each department for the upcoming fiscal year? Do you think that you got enough of a statement of the estimated debts and all the payments that we have to make this year? Do you feel that you received any other information that is necessary or useful in approving the budget? If you did not, first of all, that means the administration failed in preparing the budget, and second, that means you should not approve it. And that you need that information before you can approve it. Thankfully, you guys really did a great job on the schedule this year and made sure that you got it done with a few extra weeks before June and before July. You've got, you know, you've got plenty of time before the fiscal year starts to figure these things out and get the information. But the administration needs to make sure that they are following case law and the clear standard in the state of Michigan that says that residents, including elected officials, have the right to know what is being spent on salaries. We all have the right to know how much each person is getting paid, how much they get for their salaries, their bonuses, everything. That's taxpayer money that's being spent. If the administration continues to roadblock council on this necessary information for the budget, they're exposing the city to lawsuits, liability, and further costs. And we all know we don't have the money to do this, because we all know we don't have the money to even do the projects we have to do. We don't have enough money to fix the roads. We don't have enough money to pay anybody. We don't have enough money for anything, right? It's, it's, we have to pinch pennies here. I, it, if we don't have that money, we should not be doing this.
I'm gonna give you 30 more seconds, Mrs. LaPointe.
I think you should probably be giving me about 15 more minutes considering how long y'all went on. But I'm almost done anyway. My point is, you guys need that information to pass the budget. The mayor and the administration are roadblocking you for political reasons and personal gain at this point. And if they continue to do so, they're putting the city at risk. It needs to stop. You all need to act like adults. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a great night. Can you, uh, unmute Mrs. King? Council chair, before, uh, I just wanna thank... We just got handled for speaking about, uh, over the comments of residents, and so I'm gonna let the residents speak on. Okay. Sorry. I just wanted a comment on, uh, Mrs. LaPointe. Let, let, let the residents finish speaking, then you can go on. Thank you. Sorry, councilman. Mrs. King? You have three minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street. I won't take up my three minutes. Um, I do have a question regarding the safe route to school grant that was brought up at the last budget meeting. And then the money that was set aside out of that grant, what's gonna be happening with that?
You know, you could pause your time. Honestly, I'm gonna take responsibility. I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Deeb. I'm gonna have a conversation with Mr. Deeb, and hopefully by the next meeting. I don't know if Mr. Deeb is on here or not, but if you are Mr. Deeb, I see his name on here. Please call me tomorrow so we can discuss this and so that I can give a follow-up with Mrs. King. Mayor? Mrs. King, is that good?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, we've been wanting my answers, you know, my questions to be answered, and I want transparency and communication between all of us. This is something that has been fighting for, for over a year and a half. You allocated, Mo, you personally allocated money towards this. And I'm, I feel personally, I feel like we're all being left in the wind about it, and I don't appreciate it. Um, but, I mean, hopefully I'll have my answer soon.
I will follow, I will follow up with Mr. Deeb. I, I am gonna take the responsibility on my shoulders, and I'm sorry. Uh, but I, I will tell you, you know, me and Mr. Deeb got a good relationship where we can work together. I will reach out to him, and I will have something in writing for you, uh, by either the next meeting or maybe tomorrow.
Mo, can I just say thank you for being a man and owning up to your responsibilities and your mistakes? You're being a true, a true, whatever you wanna call it, a true person.
True public servant. That's all we're looking to do. Serve the public.
That's fine. Thank you. Have a good night, Mo. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please, uh, unmute on Sam? Sam, state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good afternoon. Sam Hayes, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Sam. Go ahead.
Council chair, I just have a quick question for you, please.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
It's either black or white answer. I don't wanna go back and forth.
You know, I won't.
Okay. What's your problem with the police department? Is it a personal problem against certain individual in the police department, or is it a financial problem? And please pause my time till I hear your answer.
Please pause this time. It is neither, sir. Black or white, it's neither. I want proper policy and procedure. If you wanna give raises, come to the council. Nothing wrong with that, Sam. All I'm saying is if you wanna spend the money, the council's the one that says yes or no. Right now, I don't know what you do. If, if you, you work as a cashier, somebody can't just take a candy and walk away. They gotta pay, they gotta come to you, they pay you, and then they can walk away. It's the same scenario. That's it, Sam. It's nothing personal. Thank you. Next question. I'll answer.
Okay. If you look back in the history of the police department, what it was and where we at right now, the people who are actually running it right now, they deserve way more than previous chiefs and previous administration and previous, whatever people they were running it. Just to let you know, I'm not sure how...
Hey, point of order, nothing from the audience.
I'm not sure how much familiar, I can care less, both the audience, say whatever they want, I can care less. People been talking out of their behind. They're not even familiar with what's going on with the city for, for years and years. Previous chiefs were going to previous chairs, getting their own vehicle signed up at their houses. If you're not familiar with that, go back on record, you can find that out. While right now, we have a great chief and great police force that are actually trying their best to clean previous chiefs' mess and actually move them the city into a better level where you can actually feel you're most secure living in the city. If you wanna talk about overpay for other people, we had previous police force and previous directors who destroyed city vehicle that was owned by us as taxpayers while they were drunk. And for resident right now, while you guys are misleading the resident with those comments online, accusing the mayor of abusing power and for personal gain, that is disgusting, Mo. That is disgusting.
Pause this time. Would you like me to answer you, Sam?
Of course, please, go ahead.
Okay, pause this time. Sam, I wanna make something very clear. All I have said here is, I, by the, I'm gonna agree with you. I think we have, I have, we, we are working on a world-class police department. I love, I admire, I love our police department, our first responders, our firefighters. I am in full support of supporting them. However, Sam, all I keep, can, can continue to tell you is, regardless of what happened in the past, the past is the past. But in the past, while things were terrible, and the mayor was the, was, 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 uh, the council chair pro time, in no way, shape, or form could the late Mayor Dan Palaico spend money and give raises without the approval of this council, and it's no different today.
I can assure you, and I will take full responsibility, he wasn't giving up raises, he was giving out vehicles. I can send my word, and you can hold me liable for it. He wasn't giving out raises, he was giving out vehicles.
Yeah.
He was giving out vehicle. If you're not familiar with it, Mo, you got my number. Call me, and I can let you see it all, buddy.
Okay, I will. Anything else, Sam?
Go ahead.
I'm asking you, anything else?
No, thanks a lot.
All right, thank you, buddy. Next up, anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else on Zoom? Anybody in the public, here in person? Please step up, sir. Rachel just yelled at me. You want me to take another administrator? I am not letting anyone else go. She's correct. It is a public hearing.
Good evening, Zoir Abdalhat, Rosemary, Dearborn Heights.
No need for your number, but I think everybody knows.
That's okay. Just a reminder. I would like to ask question. What we mean by world-class police department? We are a little city, 68,000 people.
64.
64? Somebody tells me 68.
Yeah.
Well, what's the definition of world-class police department?
You know what?
They have to be trained by some foreign entity or by some FBI agent. What, what is it? We are a small city. We are, we were running perfectly fine. There was some corruption. I, I fought for it. And I am Muslim, mayor, that he wants to clean up. But one thing he is missing, follow the process, follow the charter, and we all with you, will back you. But you have been violating, he has been violating, the budget, the charter. And I have sent you email to all of you. I am asking you, first, not to approve the budget unless it is balanced. Second, to take him to court for all the violation he's did, because this is a ground to remove him from office for using the money in the budget. One of them is, and I'm going to mention it again, Zidacok, $2,250. Then I asked Adir Foya to give me all the document. They gave me copy of checks. In invoice, it said, professional development. They refused to give me the name of the attendees, the place where they attend, the literature they distributed to those attendees. And he cut the two checks, one for $900, one for $1,250, to avoid coming back to you because it's over...
$1,500.
$1,500. This is a ground to remove him from office, and I encourage you to have, you know, some attention to what is he doing. He cannot continue disregarding, you know, his responsibility. He cannot continue telling me I have world-class police department. He approved two directors without ordinance, without your approval.
I'm at the point of order, there, there's a, there's an injunction. As much as I want you to speak on it, I'm gonna ask you, please refrain from doing any of that.
All I, okay, thank you, thank you, Mo. All I want to, to, you know, for him to follow the charter, to follow the rules, and to respect the people who put him in office. Okay? Because we are playing with people's money, which we do not have. My understanding, the budget is not balanced. Do not approve it unless it is balanced. If you have to cut in every corner, do that. Thank you.
How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on. I think I remember you.
Hey.
Déjà vu all over again.
Really? You look familiar. Uh, Vince Drapkowski, Columbia Street. My comment is not to defund police or anything like that. My comment is, I don't think it's necessary for a part-time emergency manager when we have two qualified police officers that are capable of doing the job. All you have to do is look at their resumes. That's all I'm saying about that. We don't need to add on anymore to this budget. We're already 2.9 million dollars over.
3.1.
Okay. Um, so anywhere we can save some money. The other kind of thing I wanted to mention was, uh, if you want to expand the cable program or anything like that, I think if you put the, uh, the Berwin Center stage to use, that would relieve some of your issues for lighting, sound, and, uh...
Pause this time real quick. So sorry. Mr. Turner, that wasn't on your list. It wasn't on your list. To, to, uh, about the...
Studio.
About the studio at the police department. We asked that to be removed. I also, if you were grapevine here, heard that it's already started. I hope that's not true. Please, sir, timeout.
Microphone.
Please. Please. Well, it's not, not microphone. If I call on you, I will ask on you on anything right now. Thank you. Please. Mr. Turner, please make sure you add it to the list and that it's removed.
Counselor Chair, if I may, I just.
Please, sir. Please, Roger. Please.
There's an answer from the bond.
Thank you, Roger. I, I don't even, but I don't even want it there. We don't, we don't want it at the police station. We've politicized our police station more than enough.
Okay, but it's allowed to be.
Please. Thank you. It wasn't on the list that you read to me, Mr. Turner. While he's looking for it, please start his time. Please continue.
Anyway, that's not what I want to say. I think that, uh, the facility at the, the stage facility at the Berwin Center would be sufficient. Um, I know there's activities over there, but things can be done during, um, the off-time activities. And also I think there's a capability of soundproofing that area, um, so you could record and do your shows. Yeah, my other comment was regarding the communications department. You know, you already, I feel that's already created with the cable division. Um, so hiring another or creating another department, I don't think is necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Turner, please. Yeah, please. Thank you. You can come up.
Counselor Chair, I'm sorry. Uh, the studios, construction starting on or what did you say?
That's the rumor.
Who would we go for that for verification?
Counselor Chair, it was my understanding that that, uh, budget for the capital outlay for that was left in because it's pig money.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask that it's removed. The pig money's been sitting in our account for many years. We don't have to spend it.
I'm making, I'm making a note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, can you make a note of that as well? Anything else? Anyone else here?
Counselor Chair.
Well, I'm, I'm actually gonna let the Madam Clerk go next and then you. I pushed her up like three times. And I believe Mrs. Haslett, you're also next. Did you want to speak?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Counsel. I just want to bring to your attention, um, the clerk's budget, and I had a discussion, and I don't, Margaret, I'm sorry, I forgot when. Um, and it's regarding our part-time. I had asked for additional person in our office, which is not going to work out. But I do desperately need, we have two big elections coming up, and I was wondering if that five thousand dollars, which is the projected activity, underneath it, it says, if full-time position granted, part-time is unnecessary. But we don't have the five thousand dollars even in that budget.
So you need the five thousand for the part-time?
For the part-time, just for our August and November election so that we can get that, um, person.
Chris, I, I will tell you, Madam Clerk, having, uh, I know there's like, you know, we needed some additional help in the clerk's office, but being that we're already over budget.
Okay.
Uh, I don't think that's something that the city can really burden. So I would have to tell you that I'm gonna, at least for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I'm gonna have to respectfully deny that request. As far as the five thousand dollars, um, obviously, we have two major elections coming up.
That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, so I think.
Is that five thousand? That's all I'm asking for because I do understand the, the additional person in.
But, you know, we are going to look at other things. Maybe you can help us make it work, maybe cut a little bit from here on your budget and bring up the five thousand. Help us, work with us. Cause you know, um.
Well, I'm bringing back a hundred and seventeen that we submitted from the feds.
Okay.
And then addition, additional, I think, um, I submitted just under fifty thousand for the county, for the early voting, so.
So you brought us back close to one seventy-five?
Well, I'm hoping. That's what we submitted.
Okay. I hope we get that back. At minimum, if you give us back five thousand, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was in the budget.
Mr. Turner, can you add that? George, can you make a note of that?
Thank you.
Five thousand dollars for a part-time position, uh, just to help out on the elections for, uh, uh, the clerk's office.
Sir, was that five thousand per election?
No, no.
No, total.
Five thousand total.
It's just for August and November. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Haslett, please.
No, uh, I don't really have anything additional to add. I was just gonna say in terms of doing the presentation, but you said that was good, so, okay.
I, I think I'm gonna plan something with the clerk. So we can go line item by line item of all the adjustments where I have, uh, and we'll go from there. And I'd like for you to do the presentation on the part-time as well.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman, uh, sorry, Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, first of all, I want to thank Rachel LaPointe for broadcasting those, um, budget hearings and meetings on her channel four-one-one. I was unable to make it to several of them, and I watched them on, uh, on that, uh, broadcasts. Thank you, Rachel, for doing that. Um, we, we, uh, we, we approved, or we're, it's in the budget to, to hire three new ordinance officers. And some months ago, we approved a resolution to hire these officers, and then the resolution has stated that we post the positions immediately by, within the next week or so. That's been a couple of months. Now, now that, uh, Counselor Chair, can you ask the mayor, now that it's, it's in the budget, I don't think anyone here is gonna object to these positions? Can, can you ask the mayor to, to post these positions immediately, please?
You can ask him.
No, I mean, I'm going through the chair.
Thank you. Mayor.
Okay. I thought we're gonna wait for the budget to get approved before we do that.
Can you at least, at least call for?
We had a resolution.
But let's, let's figure it out because I, as I mentioned to you yesterday, we're trying to, uh, we're reorganizing both department, trying to be more, more efficient. So, you know, we were visiting, uh, the process. Again, you know, by the time this budget gets approved, you know, we're gonna have a process.
It's in, but the, we passed a resolution to hire these, the three new officers. It's passed, and it was stated in the resolution to us posted, and it was never posted. By the time this budget's approved and the jobs are posted, it's gonna be end of summer, and we need these positions right now. I, um, one of my, uh, kids play soccer in Allen Park the other day, and I was driving to soccer game. I drove through literally by thousands of houses. I didn't see one house that had tall grass.
Not one?
Not one.
That is amazing. So shout out to Mr. Dishoom or shout out to the residents.
No, this is in Allen Park, City Allen Park. It was, I mean, I, I was flabbergasted. I go, is this because it's on the main street?
Flabbergasted. I love that word.
You know, and, and I said, right, it's like everyone's grass is mowed, you know, the parks, the, the city parks are like immaculate. I mean, and every, I mean, this is like, this is like right next to us. And, you know, this is not like in California or something like that. But, I mean, can we get those jobs posted? I mean, as, as, as directed by the resolution tomorrow?
Counselor Chair, yeah.
Mr. Dishoom's got his hands up. Would you like to hear from my councilman?
Well, I mean, he's gonna, I, yeah, sure. Here.
Please unmute, Mr. Dishoom. That's what he has to say. If you don't like him, I'll mute him for you, councilman.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, that's, I'm, yeah, you know, he works for, he, he, he works for the administration, basically, you know, he's appointed, so I'll listen to what he has to say anyway.
Go ahead, Mr. Dishoom.
Um, can you hear me, Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, the, the thing about Allen Park is they have, uh, different ordinances there. They actually charge, uh, three hundred dollar cut fee, and they have actually write misdemeanor charge against people that don't cut their grass. Um, the reason I had my hand up was because I was, uh, I thought I heard Mr. Turner say that my overtime, my overtime budget was completely eliminated. Uh, that concerns me a little bit. If that's accurate, I may have misheard him. Um, and also, uh, to Mr. Councilman Wenzel's point, I, uh, took the initiative and hired, I got one person hired doing grass only. I've been in touch with Councilman Saab about some issues. I ceded everybody else on those issues, uh, one of the areas specifically regarding grass. Uh, right, a lot of violations. I think, uh, we're on the right track if we're gonna change it and make it the, the fees and fines a little more stringent for people. I don't want to, for residents and people that don't cut their grass, residents and businesses. Um, I don't wanna, you know, get into a long conversation about that, but there's a lot of ideas that were kicking around. One of the guys that I just hired for grass was trained in about six days. That's all he's doing. My other guy is in the, in the process of being onboarded, uh, was temporary positions. Um, so I just wanted to get people going right now because it's the middle of the season, uh, the beginning of the season, and it, it's clearly out of control. As you can see, this is something that happens every, every single year. And we started a little bit early this year because I anticipated the, uh, issues with the grass because of the, the mild, uh, winter and, uh, the rain and, uh, and the warm temperatures, so.
You said, uh, Mr. Dishoom, did you say that it's a misdemeanor if you don't cut your grass in Allen Park? Cause I'm looking here online and it doesn't state that.
That is my, that is my understanding. I did not, I can't verify that. If you're looking and that's not accurate, I apologize. But that is my understanding. Um, I, I can, I, I don't, did, did you find the ordinance?
Uh, I'm looking at it here.
Okay.
Nothing here states, uh, a misdemeanor or three hundred dollars.
Okay. I, I know somebody, uh, in particular had a.
I believe it's a written writing warning first, and then, uh, and then you would be issued to a citation is from what I'm reading.
Yeah. I believe they give you forty-eight hours too, don't they? Does it say that in there to cut your grass or no?
No.
Uh, Mr. Dish, Mr. Counselor Chair, Mr. Dishoom, I have a question about the, you know, we've put the resolution for these positions. These positions are out, actually issuing warnings and tickets. Their positions are paying for themselves. I mean, the, the city looks, uh, and I, you know, I said this in an email to you. Unfortunately, the, your department is not the feelings, uh, ordinance department. You're there to, you know, to withhold ordinances and, and, and the city looks miserable with all the grasses we have here, man, to be honest with you. Dearborn issues, you gives you twenty or forty-eight hours. They come out within forty-eight hours, they cut the grass for two hundred and fifteen dollars the first time you're, you're cited. The second time, it's three hundred and fifteen dollars.
Aye, aye.
And, and, and I just don't understand why our, our fees are only fifteen percent above the grass cut. That makes no sense. What's, what's gonna be the process to raise? We should raise those fees immediately. It, it's a source of revenue there.
I have no objection to that. I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
I, I'll be putting a resolution in the next meeting.
Hang on, Councilman. Counselor Chair, I, I will say, I actually had a discussion with the mayor on this yesterday, and this is something that he said that he was working on doing. Uh, so this was something that he said to me yesterday, that he was working on doing, that he was working with Mr. Dishoom. So I don't know if, uh, the mayor had something ready, prepared or planned, but, uh, basically, he's gonna start, uh, enforcing a no cut, uh, you know, basically, you know, huge fine on, on taxpayers. If you live in the city, you don't cut your grass, administration's coming for you.
And when was this gonna be put forward?
I have no idea. He just brought it up to me yesterday.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair, sorry.
I'm gonna let the councilman finish.
The administration's not gonna bring it at the next meeting. I'm gonna put on one resolution.
Counselor Chair.
Go ahead, Mayor.
We need to change the ordinance, not a resolution. So the ordinance is controlled by Counselor Chair.
Point of order. Hang on, Counselor. Let him finish. Let the mayor finish. Go ahead, Mayor.
We all know that the ordinances is what we enforce, okay? So if we revise the ordinances, that you guys vote on it, you know, obviously it goes to two readings.
You don't need the two readings.
Okay, then you can do that, but once, okay, we're looking at to see which one, as I spoke with you yesterday. You know, that's some of the issues that we have, our fines in the city, a lot of things are way overdue. They haven't been revised in years. So we, we do need stiffer penalties. You know, a lot of cities increase the penalties. That's why they have, you know, uh, a, a lot more like law and order because nobody wants to pay the three, four hundred dollars per cut. So they, uh, they, they take advantage of the situation.
You're getting some good feedback from the audience.
Okay, so.
Speaking their language.
No, I mean, uh, for the longest time, if we, uh, the, the council can change the ordinance, and if you guys are up for it, you know, we can change the, we can propose an ordinance change and you guys vote on it and we'll make it.
I, I, I'm actually just thinking about something. I don't mean to interrupt you. I thought that we hired Mr. Saad and he was gonna work on all of our ordinances, and one of them was going to be an ordinance for our blight and things like that. I'm just throwing it out there so if it is, it's something we're working on.
Well.
Uh, Mayor, please, sir, I'm speaking to the mayor. If I call on you, I will ask on something for you. Please.
Okay.
Please. This, this is.
Yeah, well, well, I mean, he, he works with Mrs. Saad, so we have tasks he's working on, so I don't know what his tasks are.
Whatever it is, just bring it before us. I, I think unanimously here, everybody wants to see, uh, the blight go away in the city. So, and if it means charging them from fifty dollars to five hundred dollars, I dread, look, if you charge somebody five hundred dollars, you're no longer gonna see littering in the city. Thank you.
Counselor Chair, may I?
Please.
I'm, I'm, I've got the floor right now anyway, because I'm going through my list here.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, can we post those jobs tomorrow? Yes or no? Can we post them tomorrow as directed by City Council?
Counselor Chair.
Yep, Mayor.
As, as I stated, once we get this budget approved, you know, then we can, again, you know, we, we're doing a reorganization with both the building and.
I mean, we're still gonna have to need ordinance officers, so why don't we just?
Yeah. Well, well, I, we don't know exactly what we need, Counselor Chair. I mentioned it to you yesterday.
Can we post these positions tomorrow?
Uh, I mean.
Can we post these positions tomorrow?
With what? We don't, Counsel, Counselor Chair, again, you know, we're doing reorg, I need to know exactly what we need before we post it.
Counselor Chair.
If we need, Counselor Chair. Can you give them a timeframe?
Okay. Counselor Chair, listen, uh, you know, these.
Counselor Chair.
By the time this position. These positions are in the budget.
You asked a question.
These positions are in the budget. I, I asked if we post them tomorrow.
I said no.
Okay.
So you want to know the reason?
Would you answer it?
And then, again, it's, 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 the administration is breaking the law because of the council approved a resolution to hire three and have them posted by the following week, which was sometime in March. Um, there, that's, I, I believe, I'm not a lawyer, but I, I believe that's breaking the law. But these positions are in the budget. By the time the budget passes, it takes effect, by the time it, it takes effect, these people will probably not even be hired yet if you post it tomorrow. It's in the budget. The, the money's coming from the budget that, that the administration put in there. Administration put in these three things. I, I've been fighting for these for years, and I don't see any reason why this should not be posted first thing in the morning. Or if you're interested, maybe you should call the, call me, and then I'll, I'll, I'll just take the resumes. I'll start the process. I mean, someone's gotta do it. Who's gonna do it? The, the city council directed this to be done two months ago. Yeah, before budget hearings. And it's, it's put in by, in the budget by the administrations. Uh, what's the problem? I mean, what's, I don't understand what the problem is. It's just, and this grassing, oh, we're gonna look into something new, right? This is the first year we've had a grass problem in Dearborn Heights. We've never had a grass problem.
Always had a grass problem.
We've always, so this should have been taken care of years ago. Thank you. My point exactly. This should have been taken years, care of years ago. This is not a new problem. This is not, oh, you know, we're, we're gonna look for higher fees. We talked about that with the Counsel, uh, Counselor Chair Abdella, you know, and we talked about raising fees. This is not a new problem that's, okay, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be the hero. I'm gonna come up with these new fees. Cause I just came up with this idea. Cause grass has been a problem for years and years and years, and it's hideous to drive down the streets of Dearborn Heights and look at this tall grass. House after house after house, and then you got two or three people, really nice lawns, and then house after house after house with crappy looking yards. And we're hesitating to hire three new ordinance officers. Somebody doesn't care about the appearance of our city, obviously. Cause they, if, if everyone cared about this, we'd have ten new ordinance officers, grass, blight, renters. I mean, all these things should be taken care of, and thi- this is, this is absurd that we're arguing about this. This should just say, the answer should be, yes, we will post it first thing in the morning as directed by City Council two months ago.
I, I got a question.
I have.
I still, I still got four other things to talk about, but yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I know, but this is for Mr. Wenzel. I'm sorry, just one.
One, I just have a quick question. And I'm just thinking this out loud, Mayor. I don't know if this is like a possibility or not. I'm asking this question to the mayor. Um, can we have, are police officers enforce these citations? We, one second, guys. Point of order, guys. Come on. Please, guys, please. Yeah, Mayor.
I, I need to check into it with the chief. I, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure. Cause you know, I mean, there are different union. I need to check.
Councilman Saab, and then take your mirror, and then I'll go to you, uh, councilwoman, and then I'll go back to Councilman.
Counselor Chair for Mr. Mr. Wenzel.
Yeah, let me, let me finish. Okay.
Well, he wants to say something.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, so, so you, I, I'm with you. I have a, I'm a hundred percent with you on this, on these two positions. But since the mayor's saying they're reorganizing the building and the ordinance department, we should hold off on the budget until we see how they're gonna organize, because apparently we're not gonna need some positions, so why have them on the budget and be budgeted for? You know, right or wrong?
Okay. Well, we need them. We need them tomorrow.
No, no, absolutely. I'm with you. But since now all of a sudden we're do reorganizing everything.
I don't, I don't know anything about reorganizing. Do you?
No, but since, since what they're doing, then it might save the city money, why, we should just hold off on.
Come on, guys. No more side chats, go ahead, Councilman.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe something we should look into is.
Councilwoman, you're next after the councilman is done, okay?
Now, um, so. Are we posting this director, HR director, are we posting this tomorrow morning?
Council Chair, I already answered that. Hang on, Mayor, one second. Councilman Wenzel.
Can you ask the, the, the HR director if we can post this tomorrow?
She's taking orders from the mayor, the mayor's already told you no. So, whatever it is between you and the mayor, I mean, I'm just here to control.
Takes instructions.
Or she takes instructions on that. We're not in that.
So, she's being instructed not to break the law and not post these positions as directed by.
She's an at-one employee, she, I mean, if you call an attorney.
Okay.
She could call, I don't know.
I, I don't have that answer. I, I agree with you.
Okay.
I agree with you. That's, you know what, I, that was my same argument earlier. This council has its powers. No, we don't.
I know we don't.
We don't have any power.
Not anymore.
Council Chair.
Wait a minute, I got, okay, I, I, okay, now, one thing, I'm, I'm not against giving the, the police department or the chief raises according to uh. The criteria that was used for neighboring cities or whatever. But let's do it for every employee in Dearborn Heights. Let's use the exact same criteria. For every employee in Dearborn Heights and give, give not just one, but every person the equal pay that they, they deserve. I'm all for that, a hundred percent. Okay, we'll do that. Soon as that happens and we'll, okay, everything, cross the board. Um, as far as the budget goes, having to be approved by a certain day, there's no penalty to have this. From what I, my, my investigating, by June first, whatever it is, June, whatever, there's no penalty. Yeah, ju- no, approving it.
Well, yeah, preview, it'll be May twenty-seventh.
First charter of the first Monday of uh, June.
June, yeah, yeah. So, and, but there's no penalty, actual, actual penalty. So, there's, so this isn't nothing that's written, it's on that we have to do this, we could, we can go through this whole budget and do it all over.
The clerk said she'll read something.
Yeah.
Budget from the charter? Okay, it just says the council shall honor before the first Monday in June, adopt a budget for the ensuing. Fiscal year and shall by resolution designate the sums to be raised by taxation for the general purposes of the city. And for the payment of indebtedness, provided however, that failure to act within the time herein shall not invalidate any tax levy.
There's, there's no penalty for not doing it on time.
I'm not gonna lie to you, you pulled it out quick.
Yeah.
It's ready. We did this last year.
So, I mean, so, th- this isn't, hey, this gotta get done tomorrow thing, you know, like, like.
No pressure, no rush.
All the time, you know, but um. So, I'm gonna follow up on this failure to post this, these ordinance, I mean, no- nothing personal or nothing, yeah, I'm. It's personal to me, cause I'm, I hate looking at this city the way it looks right now. I'm, I'm fed up and sick and tired of it, it's, it's. It's embarrassing, you know, I have some people come by my house from the soccer league from Allen Park. And they said, all these houses for sale, they think every, people without tall grass are, they're empty. That's what they think, they're all empty houses for sale. You know, it's, it's absurd, and, and we, we gotta come up with penalties. Now, I, I have a, Council Chair, could you ask the mayor if the construction or demolition or any part of. Making a studio in the Justice Center has begun?
Mayor.
Council Chair, what?
Question was, is there any type of studio being already being carpeted, painted, doing any type of construction?
Demolition.
Could you be, which studio?
At the Justice Center, the one that you guys went up there.
All I'm gonna tell you is, the person that you listened to, you shouldn't listen to anymore, because that rumor was false.
You just.
There's, so there's no, there's been a demolition work?
No work, no carpet, no painting.
I answered your Council Chair.
There you go, he said no. No, no, it's answered.
You know, you know, Councilman, go take a look for yourself.
I am. You're, you're. I, I don't, you know, it's not that. I can't, you know, I can't trust anybody. That, that comes down to it, I mean, we're here. You know what, I don't even wanna be here. You know, this is getting to the point where, what am I doing? You know, my little girl painted a picture for me to take and right before I left, I, we were supposed to do something tonight and she put, she put water on her eye to make it a tear. Cause I was leaving. Like, I, I left that for this, be coming here and doing all this stuff and our decisions being ignored. It's a travesty.
Councilman.
Hey.
Point of order, please.
Thank you, thank you.
I will, I will tell you, I, I swear, I show you frustration, uh, having two kids at home. I always tell my wife, what am I doing? Like, what, what am I here for? What am I going? Like, whenever I go on vacation, I call Councilman Ahmad and I say, I'm done. I don't, I don't wanna go back. Like, I had such a relaxing, good time, and then I come here and it's like this anxiety and pressure and, you know what? We don't do this, uh, uh, we do this for the residents, we do this for public service, we do this for your grandkids, for your kids, for my kids. For your children and for the future of our city.
That's what we wanna do, but it's not happening.
Because, uh, you know, I can't wait to drive down One Soul Drive.
Oh, I'm gonna have it, no.
We keep trying, Councilman. Thank you guys, nothing from the audience.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Brier.
Well, I do have one bit of good news, uh, there's apparently something in the works that was done at the Justice Center. A couple of weeks ago, and I think Vince was there, I don't know, Evangel was there. Where we talked about, there's something in the works that the police reserves would ticket for cars illegally parked on trash day. They would be allowed to do that.
Unit backup?
Huh?
Is our reserve unit backup?
From what I understand, it's being processed, yes. And I'm, I'm trying to think why illegally the reserves couldn't work hand in hand with the ordinance officers somehow. A ticketing process for the grass.
I don't know, I don't know, uh, I'm not the chief, the chief is, I don't know, is the chief fine, Mayor?
I need to check, you know, I'll, I'll get back with you.
Thank you so much. If, uh, police officers can issue citations to.
Council Chair, is the reserve back, uh, and working? Do we have the reserve back, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I, I need to check, I know that. Find out there's some stuff that would then needed to be done for ample certification.
Nice.
So they checked with ample, so I think.
Is that, is that any city pin? Can we get one of those? You gonna share them with the council? Yeah, can you give, how about you give us seven? I'm gonna shoot him with the council. I got, Rogers got one over there too, right there, I see he's got one. I like my white one anyways, I think it's nicer. Council Chair. Council Chair.
Yeah.
You know, I would be, I would be interested in the reserve, maybe I would apply probably for it if it's up and running.
I don't think they'd hurt you.
Uh, but I wanted to go back to ordinance, uh, I know we did talk about saying that if we have full-time employee, if we hired, you know, full-time employees that are extra three. We are going to eliminate the part-time and overtime. So I'm not sure how long this organization or reorganization is gonna take place, we'll know exactly how to. Go ahead with the budget, whether we should leave the overtime and the part-time or not, so.
We already removed it, because we already have it budgeted. Mind you, this is the mayor's budget, he had already budgeted these three positions. Because the council requested it, so they're already in the budget, so why don't we ever, why don't we really, I mean, it's already in the budget, we should at least. And I'm so confused. It's like putting on shoes and not tying your shoes.
And the budget that you're talking about is for next fiscal year?
Yeah.
Okay, so have you voted on that budget? Have you approved the budget for next fiscal year? No, you have not.
Yeah, but the resolution he passed was before even the bu- budget hearing, so that was a whole different story.
Council Chair, I mean, we should just keep going back in circles, I mean, just like, like I said. Okay, I had a meeting with, you know, for the probably tenth time I mentioned this. We, we have, I met with the building director and ordinance director. Okay, we're trying to get one person from ordinance to come to the city hall. To enforce certain codes, instead of, you know, ordinance, should, you can help out ordinance, there's some stuff that is being done, like I said, is not efficient. So I'm trying to be efficient with the city. You can bring in three people, what happens, okay, for, for grass cutting. You have part-time employee, part-time employees now doing the ordinance for, uh, uh, enforcement for grass. So, we're looking for another part-time employee. The concern is if you bring in three and down in, in the wintertime, what do you wanna do, lay those guys off? So that's some of the stuff that I'm looking at, you know.
Your mic on there?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's actually, so that's, you don't wanna hire employees and end up laying them off, so that's why we're trying to be efficient, like I said. You know, just, let's wait, excuse me, I'm not done, Councilman. So, let's, let's figure out what we're gonna do here in the next few days, you know, we're trying to bring in somebody from the. From ordinance to come and just see if we can do, basically, that person will be doing CFOs. You know, we talked, you heard it yesterday, Council Chair, you know, somebody got a ticket, you know, for CFO and the person had a CFO. So it's embarrassing to get a CFO ticket, you go to court, well, I've already had a CFO. So that's why we need to bring it in-house here to the city hall, so a person can actually just check it out to make sure. And that person worked for the building department, so, again, you know, just, we're work, we're doing our due diligence, due diligence to make sure. That we have an efficient process. You know, we will post whatever we need to post for, we'll ask for it. And just, just give me a little bit of time to figure out what we're gonna do to be efficient, you know, that, that she, uh, the. The ordinance director and the building director is happy with.
Thank you, Mayor, no, I, I, I appreciate your attention to this matter, but I, I mean, Director Dishoom, he's, he showed concern like because we removed the overtime. So how long do you think this reorganization is gonna take place? Is it gonna be before we approve the budget or?
Well, Council Chair, you know, there, there's some stuff that we're working on, you know, there's, you know, you guys mentioned it, you know, we didn't want to let the cat out of the bag. You know, I mean, obviously, they work four days a week, you know, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, there's no ordinance. So we try to. Anyway, that's another contract issue we'll discuss, you know, in a closed session. But, what we're trying, what we're doing is we're bringing people overtime on Friday or Saturday or Sunday. To make sure that people are building with permits, and, you know, you have one person that shows up on the weekend. They're writing, you know, they're what, two, three tickets, you know, there's several, you know, several thousand dollars that pays for an employee for, for a week. But, but again, this is what the overtime is for.
Okay.
Is you come, you come on the weekend and, because a lot of people like to do things on the weekend without permits.
So we should, we shouldn't even remove overtime at the moment, this is for the next fiscal year, you're, you're at the, for, doesn't matter if you remove it, it's not like it started, it's for next year. I understand.
Well, that's, that's the same thing, Council Chair. Then, then why not approve these guys? I mean, if you're talking about the next fiscal year, about this overtime cut. And, but, I mean, I say we leave the overtime in there and then we could always, we could always make a budget amendment to take the overtime out. Let's leave the overtime in there for now.
I mean, we left it in there.
I mean, it, it might, this might take, this reorganization might take six months, we don't even know anything about it.
It in there, it's just that the fact of the matter is, are they going to actually publish these positions?
Yeah, also, um. It's, it's, it's not logical to think that three new guys or girls or whatever, three new or- ordinance officers. Would be laid off in the wintertime, because we could probably use talking to the building department and the ordinance department. You know, four, five officers just for rental properties to maintain them. So, they, they wouldn't be laid off, the, the threat of them being laid off in the wintertime is, is false.
Council Chair.
I mean, you, you, there's so many, there's blight issues they could handle, you, they could, they could be doing license renewal issues, going and inspecting, I mean. There, there's something for the, for them to do year round, if, if not, then we'll, we'll find something for them to do, I mean, you know, to make our city, I mean.
Look, you might not see tall grass in the winter, but you're always gonna see blight.
You can see snow that's not shoveled, and you're gonna, you're gonna see blight, you're gonna see garbage cans sitting out in front of people's houses. There's always, there, there's, there's more ordinance issues than we have officers. Probably twice as many, you could hire probably twice as many officers and they still couldn't handle our ordinance problems we have year round.
Okay.
I mean, people that, that don't want, don't care about this, that are putting things off and re- re- rearranging things, that we have no idea. It's the first time I've heard they're, they're restructuring, uh, the ordinance department or the building department. Uh. Don't, don't care, they, they have other priorities besides what the city looks like.
Okay, I'm gonna hear from the mayor and then we're ending this topic on ordinance, please. Go ahead, Mayor, this is, this is, I'd like it just ended here, but I wanna hear the back and forth, but go ahead.
No, I, I agree with you, I mean, you know, for the eleventh time. So we had, I know, I think the city attorney wants to say something, but basically, you know, I already said it, you know, this was said before in other meetings. I don't know if Council Wenzel was here or not, but I did mention that we're doing reorganization.
Thank you.
In both departments, and again, you know, we wanna be more efficient, you can't just throw a bunch of people at something if you're not efficient. We do need to revise the ordinances, we do need to put stiffer penalties. And, you know, we're looking at, uh, there, there is an ordinance, I can't remember which one it is, it's actually a misdemeanor, you know, to get a ticket, you know, for, for, for blight. But I'm not sure which city, we, we pulled up a bunch of city, uh, ordinances and we're trying to see which one is the most stringent. Which one is, would be suitable for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Roger. It's not necessary.
Done, yeah?
Thank you.
Housekeeping matter.
Please, Roger, point of order, it's not necessary.
I'm sorry.
Please, Roger, point of order, we didn't call on you, it's not necessary. I'm not being disrespectful to you. Roger, please. I, please.
Amended.
Roger, please.
Last year and we.
Roger, please.
Thank you.
Don't wanna listen to this. Guys, we're, we're done with this topic, please. Please, Councilman, Councilman, we are done with this topic, please. That's it, I'm over it, we're done, we had the conversation, he said how he felt, the mayor said what, what can it can happen, it's done, I said, I, the mayor was the last one on this one. Please, Councilman.
It's not, but go ahead, I'm, I'm done.
Oh, you wanna speak about the budget? That's, you have that.
I'll talk to you after the meeting, so.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Okay, anything else on this budget, guys? Anyone else in the public? I see we have a Sally R.
Yes, ready?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, this is Sally Ramos, I live on Kingston Street, I'm a resident, but as you all know, I am also, um, a city employee. But I'm speaking as a resident, um, and unfortunately, I do wanna speak about the ordinance. Um, it's very frustrating as a long time, I grew up here, I graduated from Annapolis. And unfortunately, grass has been a long time issue, this is not a new issue. And I feel that we do need to look at higher fees. Because it frustrates me that I don't care how many tickets we are going to be writing these people, that does not make people cut their grass. So I feel like, instead of blaming our poor ordinance officers and directors about this issue. Why are we not making a campaign to get residents more involved and make the residents? Be aware that it's their responsibility to cut their grass and keep their stuff beautiful. Didn't we used to have a beautification, um, award that we would give out to residents? Maybe have some sort of that kinda thing to get these people motivated, because it's not, I, like I said. Again, I don't care how many tickets you write or violations you give. These people will just pay it, it's just nothing to them. Let's try and, you know, fix this. Please, I hope that the reorganization will help, but, um, that's just my two cents, I'm all in favor of higher fees. Because I'm frustrated just, just as everybody else.
Thank you so much, thank you, Sally. Uh, I will tell you guys, if we're just quickly, briefly, um, my, my neighbor did not. Uh, cut the grass in the last two days and I felt like the pollen and everything was gonna come on my grass and I've been. As Ange knows, I've been putting the weed in feed, I'm doing it all, I used to have my old neighbor Mickey who moved to La Vona. Uh, he used to do everything for me, and now I'm the one figuring it out, and my grass looks amazing. Um, thanks to myself, cause I did a phenomenal job. Um, but I had to walk up and knock on my neighbor's door and I said. L, you gotta cut your grass, because your weeds are rolling over to my grass and my grass looks like crap. And it just makes it until your neighborhood look bad, and I'm telling you, I'm that neighbor. If you're speeding, I'm gonna stand in front of your car, excuse me, hello, my dog, my son, my, my daughter, my wife. My mother, my father, hello, there's nothing wrong with doing that, so, you know, ta- you know, thank you so much, Sally. If your neighbors got long grass, knock on their door. Just the other day, I told somebody who just moved into my neighborhood. Hey, what's going on, guys? I just wanna introduce myself, I'm Mo, my wife is Leila, we live down the street. But do me a favor, please, you guys need to cut your grass, ordinance already passed by here, I told him I would tell you guys before they issued you a ticket. Within ten minutes, they were cutting the grass, ordinance didn't even drive by, I just said that. Um, and so, it's okay, it's okay to be a little friendly, I mean, you know, if you're gonna constantly be the annoying person, then, you know, pick up the phone and be the one that called and. I wanna say, listen, I told this guy ten times, you know what, they haven't cut their grass, residents, you have to do your part as well. Whether it's a, you know, tenant, landlord, renter, homeowner, whatever it may be, a councilman, a mayor, um, you know. You, you have to cut your grass, you should maintain it, and then who wants to live in front of a very ugly curb appeal? Uh, so I just wanted to share that, uh, next up, I think that now that I see, oh, Mrs. King, I see you have your hand up. You spoke already, I'm gonna give you twenty seconds, because you, you only spoke for like ten seconds, but I'm gonna give you twenty seconds.
Thank you, Mo. For you, yourself and Tom Wenzel, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Um, you guys showed your frustration with everything that's been going on in the city. Both of you and anybody sitting on that council in those seats right there, don't give up.
Thank you.
Hold strong, stand strong, the fight will continue and you got it.
Thank you so much, thank you. The dog's barking. I hear the dog. Uh, okay, here, seeing that we have no more in person or-
Oh, Vince did.
Vince, Vince spoke twice, Vince spoke twice. I gave you an extra three minutes, you spoke for six minutes. I'm, I'm gonna give you 30 seconds, Vince. Only because if I know, if I don't, I know you're gonna call me and start yelling at me over the phone.
I'll follow you down the hall.
Follow me down the hall.
Drive by your house there. Vince Skalkowski, Columbia Street, and I'll try not to make this long, but I originally pushed for the Ordnance Department to be put back over at the Police Department for the simple reason that the Police Department and the Ordnance Department to work together. Now, when our officers take an oath, their oath is to follow the rules, regulations of the state of Michigan and the city of Dearborn Heights, which the laws are our ordinance. Is that the, is that the oath that you took, officer?
Please, Mayor, hang on, he, he's entitled, he can say whatever, he wants to talk about his cat, he can, Mayor, point of order, please, Mayor, please.
I've been to several, uh, Mayor, and that is part of it.
Come to here, speak to, speak to the chair.
Mr. Chair, I've been, I've been to several swearing-in ceremonies of our officers.
Right.
Our officers are to uphold the laws of the state and the city, and our city laws are the charter. Okay? Now, usually, these meetings are pretty calm, quiet, nobody's, uh, throwing things at anybody or anything like that, but we've had an officer and a reserve officer sitting there for two hours when they could have been out writing ordinance violations.
Thank you, sir, but regardless, I still think with, with, you know, you never know when it happens and it comes at a-
Exactly.
It hasn't happened, but if it does-
Thank God it hasn't.
Thank you, and I'm not gonna risk that on anybody.
I don't wish that on anybody either.
I say I wouldn't risk it on anybody, if God forbid, a, a crazy gunman walks in here, I mean, I'm running.
So I'm ducking.
Yeah.
But-
I hope the officers, you know, you're not taking down the perpetrator, right?
But I'm saying, when, if, if, there's been times we've had six officers sitting there-
There's no need, there's no need.
Okay, exactly, there's no need for six officers. Point is, is that officers can also write out ordinance violations.
I asked them, the mayor's gonna get back with us on that.
No, well, that's where the Ordnance Department started from.
Mayor, can you give us an answer on that by tomorrow? Please, thank you. Please, I'll give you an answer by tomorrow. I'll email you whatever the answer is.
Great, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Vince, sorry, your 20 seconds are up, bud.
Oh, come on, Mo.
I'm sorry.
You said 30.
You, you were like, you were on like over a minute.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, and Mayor, I'm glad to see things.
All right, next up is the closing of public hearings, seeing that we have, anybody else? Ange? Nope. Anybody else? Mr. Turner? Anything else? No?
Can I get the recommendation of closing of-
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved to the Dearborn Heights, the council closed the public hearing at 7:57 PM.
Thank you. Support, motion, you can still speak, this is not just for public, Councilman. I know, I know, the meeting's not over, as you're not adjourning the meeting, there's still, you still have, uh, council comments. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Conson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is comments from council members. Councilman, stop.
I'd like to schedule on next, budget.
I'm gonna work on the, uh, that with the, uh, with the clerk's office and then they'll send it out to all you guys.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Conson.
Just, uh, so everyone knows, our former City Attorney, Jeremy Akki, was the opinion that you, you don't make something a misdemeanor because then the defendant can ask for a jury trial, delay things, they're entitled to jury trial, appeal, and so he, what he recommended was we increase or double the fines for municipal civil infractions. I was on the council, I don't remember who else was, but that's the only problem, that's why they started civil infractions to begin with was for traffic tickets and so forth, to speed the process up.
Thank you so much, Councilman. I, I'm just gonna say a few things here. I'm disappointed in today's public hearing, uh, that we didn't have enough residents out here that are not informed, that didn't show up here. You all pay, every single person in the city pays taxes, you should all be here. Uh, so I'm extremely disappointed in that. I'm also disappointed at the fact that we didn't go line item by line item like we did in the past because that's what I anticipated. Um, I don't, I don't blame Mr. Turner on this one, um, but, you know, Michelle and Plant Moran, I'm a little disappointed because I expected this, you guys were here last year, you guys witnessed it last year, this isn't your first budget with the city of Dearborn Heights, so I am really, really disappointed, but, uh, better or not, we're gonna plan something and, and hopefully, we're gonna go line item by line item. Um, I also wanna thank Mr. Turner because I know that you put your, you know, you put a lot of time into this. And I didn't ask you to get up here and speak and, you know, anytime I feel like I am disrespecting somebody, I like to own up to it and I felt like sometimes I was being, not unintentionally, by the way, I was unintentionally being disrespectful to you and I'm sorry for that. If I ever came at you disrespectful because that isn't who I am, Mr. Turner, so I hope you can forgive me if at any point you felt like I was disrespecting you. I don't know if you felt that way.
I did not.
Thank you. I, I just, I felt like I could have been a little pushy and I, and I don't mean that. I know I asked Michelle to do some majority of the speaking, it was only because I felt like she was a little bit more versed on, on, on the budget in, in itself. Um, for better news, you know, actually, before we go to the better news, I also want to reiterate myself, I know when we had a resident speaking earlier about the Police Department, um, I love police officers. I am a Wayne County Sheriff, Reserve Police Officer, my brother-in-law is the Director of Homeland Security, my other brother-in-law's brother is the Under Sheriff for Wayne County Sheriff. Many, many, many of my best friends are police officers, K-9 people, I'm gonna continue to reiterate that. Um, if there's something going on with the organization, that is within the organization. But if it has to do with the funding and the money of the organization, I just wanna make sure it's properly being done. That's it. There's nothing wrong with that. I mean, you, you know, we, we can't feel like we're stepping on eggshells when it comes to spending taxpayers' money, all right? The job is for officers to do their job and we, as the council, will make sure that we are funding it properly. There's never been a time outside of chairs, chairs, that was it, that was the only thing I've ever denied for the Police Department, were chairs. And it was because we were gonna lease chairs for 17,000 or 19,000 dollars. And I said, no, no, no. I, I know, I know chairs are, you know, extremely important and, and some of it was supposed to go to the dispatch somewhere and some of it was supposed to go to the officers. I still don't believe that in my heart, I could tell residents, I spent your money on chairs at 20,000 dollars. That was the only ever time I've ever said no, uh, just like I've never said no to the clerk, but today I had to say no to the clerk in saying, we can't afford to bring on another position for you guys and I'm sorry. Hopefully, one day, we will find that way, uh, but for now, it's something we can't afford. And for better news, my little brother recently just announced his relationship, uh, in Arabic, we call it a tulbe, with a significant other Jenna, who will be a future sister-in-law of mine. It actually took place on Dwight Street as I was walking in my car, I said, oh my God, Angela lives across the street. So if you saw a bunch of cars, it was me and my family walking over to the bride's house, uh, or the soon-to-be bride, future fiancee, and you basically go up and ask for permission for my little brother to speak, and it's just more cultural, right? All the uncles come together, hey, I'm, you know, Mo's uncle, I'm Hattie's uncle and my brother Hattie, and we ask, uh, you know, if we get permission for Hattie to speak to your daughter and your gra, and your niece and granddaughter and all her uncles and grandfathers and grandmothers who are all there. Then you all take pictures, break bed and everybody goes home and then now they're publicly allowed to be boyfriend and girlfriend. Um, it's a cultural thing, but that's basically what happened and I'm extremely proud of my younger brother, Hattie. And then just to finally put it there, my beautiful wife, Lila, my amazing mother, Haji Hiam, Mother's Day is Sunday. Happy Mother's Day to you too, happy Mother's Day to all of you here in the room and all that work for the city, happy Mother's Day, go enjoy that day, it's your day, heaven is beneath the mother's feet, in case nobody told you that, kiss your mother's feet because that's where heaven is. Uh, so Councilwoman Breyer, Councilwoman Denise Maxwamalowski, happy Mother's Day to you too, our amazing clerk, happy Mother's Day, our HR Director, happy Mother's Day, uh, our, our council, I'm sorry.
Director.
Director, uh, Sauer, um, happy Mother's Day, Angela, happy Mother's Day, and to all of the council members here, happy Mother's Day to your wives, to your mothers and grandmothers and everybody else, sisters, aunts, uncles, you know what I mean? That's it.
Council Chair.
Yes, Council.
I have a few items I wanna talk about. First off, I reached out to, uh, Director Conrad yesterday, honestly, with about 10 emails that I got over trees and, uh, honestly, the DPW, you know, they came through today. I got a message from a resident with a picture of them cutting the street, I'm less than 12 hours later, I've gained notice, so.
I'm about to give you my list.
No, no, no. Um, and I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Conrad and his team and his crew for going out and doing what they do. Honestly, they did a great job, thank you again. And, uh, recommendation to IT, if they can make an email address directed just for trees, that they could make the process so much easier with people submitting addresses and everything, instead of getting, uh, the director or anybody bombarded with emails. Um, and Director of Ordnance, Bill Dishroom, you know, I reached out to him about, um, Beach Daily, how long the grass was, yeah, in an email two days ago, and I passed by today, some lawns were caught, I seen some notices on doors, reinforced, I mean, if we can do more enforcement like that, it's, you know, it just makes the city look better, things get done, and I wanna appreciate him for taking time and sending somebody out there for that. Um, you know, going back to the budget, the budget should be an open book, should be just literally open up the binder, everything should be in front of you, we shouldn't have to ask back for any information, that's it. It's people's tax money, it's people's, it's the people's money, it's just like a bank, you know? When you're a teller at a bank, they give you money and the other day, you gotta balance in, in that drawer, you can't go home. And it's the same, same exact concept in the city and it's just, it's simple, just have it be an open book and, and we'll get through it. Um, another thing I wanna thank, uh, Councilman Baydun, Constan, Ms. Breyer, Tom Wenzel for the E-course cleanup on Saturday.
Councilman Ahmad was in and out, I think. He just didn't really do much cleaning.
I didn't see him, but honestly, I gotta give it to you, we-
And the clerk.
Oh, and, uh, the clerk too, yeah.
She was there before you.
She was, she got there an hour early before anybody. Uh, we did a heck of a job, it turned out, I think our section that we were working on, Councilman Town, and so that was the best section there. Uh, we hauled off, we did an amazing, actually turned out so nice, there were so many volunteers, I wanna thank every volunteer from every high school that honestly dedicated their time and put the effort in and it was, uh, you know, teamwork, teamwork makes the dream work.
Honestly, Councilman, uh, Saab, believe it or not, did a phenomenal job. I mean, I was picking on him a little bit, but he, he did not give up, I, he did, I ended up going to my son's swimming lessons, but the guy stayed there for like three hours, I said either he's bored or he's really into it.
Uh, we got, we, we got it done, how many yards of, uh, mulch did we move at once, Tom?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? We did a good job, we did a pretty, uh, with the coal shovel, we did a pretty good job. And, uh, you know, Tom, Tom was all over the place, man, you did a great job, Tom, thanks for, uh, thanks for hosting and doing it. We had some great sponsors and I wanna thank the sponsors, uh, for donating to this event and, uh, so that's that. So one more thing is about, I go back to grass cutting, and tell your neighbors, you know, if you're a grass cutter, just ask your neighbor, tell your neighbor, tell their neighbors, the, the city just looks terrible, the van lines and, and everything, honest to God, it's just, it's horrible. Like today, I was cutting my lawn and I looked at my neighbor's lawn, I was like, you know what, just ended up cutting his lawn, I just couldn't look at him.
Yeah, I'm about to tell him you said that.
Oh, it's fine, the other neighbor, not, uh, not, not my husband's neighbor, but, uh, you know, I, 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 a clean street, a clean house, just, it's a good representation. And then, uh, my last thing is I wanna wish everybody a happy Mother's Day this weekend, enjoy the day, plant, do something, go out, relax, and thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Good job, Councilman, good job, thank you. Good job on the trees and the blight and you're doing a good job, honesty.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Got my water bill today. It's the first time ever, ever, my water's been, been this low, I don't know why. I'm kinda complaining that it's, it's actual though, but it's low, it's never come that low, and I mean, I'm, uh-
It might only be for a month.
No, it's two months, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, and I mean, the sprinklers are on, the falls on, but, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, uh, I'm, I'm debating if it's an actual bill or if it's wrong or not, it was that low, mostly.
Councilwoman?
I personally intend to go knocking on six doors in a row on Annapolis, who-
Wow.
Their yard is horrible, the van lines-
Text their addresses, I'd love to see them.
Uh, they're between, uh, Westlake and the next street.
Mr. Dishroom, get on Annapolis.
Yeah, and then the next block, same thing, I mean, two or three, one does it, then the next day-
Did you, did you send an email to, uh, next time, send me an address?
Not yet, I, I just notated them today.
Okay. Yeah, guys, anytime council members you see one, while I'm driving, I pull over to the side, I send the ad, uh, just to Mr. Dishroom, I mean, it's still pretty dirty, Mr. Dishroom, but, uh, the house also looks abandoned, so I would just send somebody to cut the grass, I mean, we're not gonna just wait for them to come.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else? Thank you, Councilwoman, that was, uh, that's true public service there and I appreciate I, uh-
Yeah, they have a habit of leaving out their trash barrels too and putting them in the wrong place, so.
Call Angela, show-
I think we need a letter sent out to everybody as to what the rules and regulations are expected.
Councilman Conson, anything?
Uh, happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, to my mother in heaven.
Rest your soul, sir.
Thank you.
It was had us crying, I don't even know if I wanna, I don't want you to talk anymore, I mean, just go optimistic from here, let's talk about family and just not crying. Yeah. Council Chair? Yeah, Councilman. Thank you.
You know, I wanna tip my hat to, uh, Director Dishroom for doing what he's doing with the amount of staff he has. I, I know they're, they're, I talked to them, almost all of them, uh, and they're, they're, they're very busy, you know, they don't have a time, time off to do anything, I mean, they're, they're, what they're doing is phenomenal and we need to double that, but I won't get into that, but that, Bill, thanks for everything you're doing, thanks for all the ordinance What they're doing is phenomenal, and we need to double that, I won't get into that, but, Bill, thanks for everything you're doing, and thanks for all the ordinance officers out there, thanks for doing your job. And they could testify, you could, you could stop 10 houses on a block and write down addresses where the grass is tall. I mean, it's unbelievable, I've seen this bad before, but keep up the good work, guys and girls, and we'll see what we can do, maybe we'll get something going for you to help you out. We had, like Councilman Saab said, we had our annual E-course Creek Cleanup and Rain Gardens Saturday, and we had a phenomenal turnout. I mean, I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, because as I said, the students came up and drove from Annapolis and Crestwood, they're our backbone for our cleanup projects. We couldn't do without them, we had several families in there, husbands and wives and kids, which is a really cool thing, because it's family, you know, family oriented. And, you know, Councilwoman Nancy Breyer, she helped us out with the registration, got there, you know, and Councilman Conson, he was working pretty hard, and Councilman Beidun, and Councilman Saab was there almost the whole time, I think, just about the whole time.
Yeah, I got there about 8:45, and I left at 11:15, yeah, my son had swimming, he got 11:45, so I had to leave a little early.
And, but, you know, the things that we got to get done at the end, it's always crazy at the end, because you have these, all these piles and piles of mulch, and you have to get that into the rain gardens, otherwise, you have to do what we did last year, I had to take my family there on Sunday to do it, but Councilman Saab was there, and every, all these kids are using shovels, and he goes in the garage, and he gets the big giant shovel, and they're shoveling it in there. And what he did to help out with sponsors, you know, I can't thank him enough, and our clerk, Lysiana, she was there, I mean, gosh, she was like a maniac, and then pulling them weeds, it was great, you know? It was good to see everyone there, if I, you know, forget, I thank you, everyone, you know, the sponsors, my gosh, you know, we have these T-shirts, go online, you know, on my Facebook page, check out the T-shirts, they're really good, they're designed by a famous artist that, you know, charges very little to do it, and our firefighters were represented there, and we, it was such a good time, a good camaraderie and learning experience about the rain gardens and things like that. And speaking of family fun, we have our first annual Crestwood High School Family Fun Night this Saturday, the 11th, at 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we're having a special, secret Mother's Day section, so, you know, the kids can go there and they can do some projects for their mothers, for, Mother's Day is the following day. And happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up from the administration.
Councilor Chair.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I said administration anyways, here you are.
Just one second, whatever, Councilman Wenzel said, and everybody, I think, the ordinance department, Director Dishroom, they're doing a great job. I did send them a few emails yesterday for a few streets about grass, and I got the resident texting me today thanking me that they did show up and give, you know, citation or talk to the residents about it.
See, that's important, Mr. Dishroom, round of applause, a round of applause to Mr. Dishroom on that one. That's a great start, Mr. Dishroom, thank you so much.
He's on top of his stuff, and about the police department, like you said, Councilor Chair, it's not about, we're all about increases, but it's just to do it the right way. And just wanna wish every mother a happy Mother's Day, and thank you very much.
I'm about to start wearing a shirt or something on my chest that says, "We exist, we're here." Next up is administration, Mayor, do you have anything?
Thank you, Councilman, I just wanted to thank everyone, we did complete the immigration seminar, two hours last week Wednesday 25th, I'm sorry, 25th, it was extremely successful. We, Detroit just got the, an award, it's the only city in the state of Michigan that is friendly, has got a designation from Washington DC as a friendly city for immigrants coming in, sort of like a rescue city in the state of Michigan, the only one is Detroit. By putting our, and because what it does is sends a message that the city is friendly to immigrants. By putting our immigration seminar on, we had five attorneys present, they covered everything, including the TPS protection for Palestinians that was passing into February by President Biden, it sent a message to the community, and it's being sent to different law firms, as well as bar associations, one is in Lebanon, to show that this city is friendly towards immigrants and investors. The other thing we're planning in May is the seminar for our veterans with needs, as well as social security issues for our elderly residents. The mayor has approved it, we're putting that together, we have a number of lawyers volunteering to come in and address our veterans. In fact, the Rotary Club has contacted us, that we wanna get some veterans from outside that wanna come to this seminar. Those are some of the projects we're going on, we already met, we met with Crestwood on the issue of the juvenile diversion programs that we want to see implemented here, and we're looking forward to it, working with the court, really taking the burden off of our schools. And Crestwood, D7, Annapolis, and other things that have been happening, and have it here at the court, so I just wanted to update you.
I just wanna add a couple of things before we move on to administration, I know school's coming to an end, kids are gonna be driving. We have requested, I think, for two, a little over two years now, maybe two and a half, for signages around our school, school zone, our crosswalk, our crosswalks. I know that Mr. Deeb and our chief, Hart, said that they were working on something with TSA or TIA, I don't know the name of the company, but, what is it? TIA. We still don't have any signs, you know, it's in a mile radius as well, so, Mr. Deeb, that's gonna be something on our list for tomorrow, so I will call you on that as well. Any other one from administration? Seeing none, next up, I guess we'll go to comments from the public. I already had comments on the budget, any comments on the public? Seeing none, on Zoom, Sally, no, that's not Sally. I don't see anybody, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Saab, seconded by, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Breyer, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries, have a wonderful day.